And we'll have the pledge. John?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, welcome, everybody. We will begin this meeting. We have a proclamation. Dublin Business Appreciation Day, which is Friday, March 13th, and this is going to be accepted by Dan Weblin, Vice President, Supply Chain Perio, with Barbasol Brands. And I believe if you'd like to come forward, I'll present this. So, I have a proclamation here. Whereas Dublin, Ohio is known for its thriving corporate community, from its large international businesses, to its emerging companies built with robust entrepreneurial spirit, and whereas world-class companies like Perio, Inc., go beyond doing business in Dublin, but also contribute to the fabric of the community through exemplary corporate citizenry, and whereas the Dublin business community enables smart and innovative organizations to realize their business goals by providing the exemplary environment for success, and whereas the Dublin is proud of the over 3,000 companies have chosen to make Dublin their home, the city of Dublin is a beneficiary of exemplary services by over 70,000 employees within our community, and whereas Dublin businesses have contributed significantly to the overall economic well-being of Dublin, the central Ohio region, and the state of Ohio, and whereas the city invites all Dublin businesses and employees to celebrate the Irish spirit present throughout this community, not only on St. Patrick's Day, but throughout the year, now therefore I, Michael H. Keenan, Mayor of the City of Dublin, Ohio, on behalf of Dublin City Council, do hereby proclaim Friday, March 13, 2015, as Dublin Appreciation Day. So, well, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Keenan. Just briefly, we are here in Dublin, and we really appreciate the support and the services that we get from the, from the, all you folks. So, doing business is tough these days, and we really, you know, to keep our edge, need to stay on our toes, and we really appreciate this, this award and recognition. So, thank you all very much.
Okay. We also have a special presentation. Blarney Bash, Dublin AM Rotary, and the presentation, I see you have another hat on, Julie Rinaldi, are you here? You have your Dublin AM Rotary hat on tonight.
I have my Dublin AM Rotary hat on tonight.
Well, welcome.
Yes. Good evening. I am Julie Rinaldi, and you all know me as the CEO of Centero at Dublin Counseling Center, but I am here tonight as the President of the Dublin AM Rotary, and I'm here to also introduce the President-elect, Wolf Lant. We are here to announce that the Blarney Bash is back, and it's back because we're coordinating with the city, and we want to thank you so much for all the, the support that the city has provided to us in coordinating this event. It's this Saturday, and Wolf is going to give you some details.
Thank you all for your support. We really appreciate it. This is a great event, and we're really excited about it. We've gotten a lot of feedback from the community and a lot of support from area businesses, and everybody is just really fired up about having this event back. We have gotten through the event very smoothly, and we appreciate all the help from the people in the various departments in the city of Dublin, Washington Township. They've been very supportive. Allison Leroy, Terry Schimoller have helped us design this event, and we really appreciate their input. Also, Scott Dring and Sarah Blastnik, excuse me, of the Dublin Convention and Visitors Bureau have also been very supportive. They started a winter weekend in Dublin campaign, and they got over 5,400 entrants and over 3,000 email inquiries about the Blarney Bash. So, there are a lot of people really supporting this. Their comment was, "With such great results, I'm considering making this an annual campaign. The social reach has been outrageous." So, we are really looking forward to this. I'd like to show you a poster for the event that you will hopefully see around town, and we'd like to present you with some VIP passes for council to attend the event, and you're welcome to speak at the event as well. And we have a package here for that. So, thank you all very much.
Well, thank you. We're all looking forward to St. Patrick's Day, which will be celebrated this Saturday. We'll kick off the parade, I think it's at 11 o'clock, Dana?
Yep.
And there's many festivities throughout the rest of the day, and it looks like the weather's broken just in time here for all of us, thankfully. I actually heard the birds singing this morning, so.
That sounds great.
Keep your fingers crossed.
Yep. So, thank you all. I do have, I would like everybody to recognize a moment of silence here. I've had some, some words about Sherm Sheldon, who passed away on February 24th. As many of you know, the city of Dublin had lost the, one of our former leaders late last month. Sherm served on Dublin Village Council and his clerk treasurer before he was appointed village administrator, and then became Dublin's first village manager on January 1st, 1980, which was the effective date of the city of Dublin's first charter. Before retiring in 1987, Sherm left an impressive legacy, and in fact hired Police Chief Heinz von Exberg and Parks and Open Space Director Fred Hahn. And as City Manager Dana McDaniel said last week, stated at the city presentation, "So many of us stand on the shoulders of the visionary leaders who preceded us," and that certainly is the case with Sherm. He was a major player in the three pivotal moments in Dublin's modern history: the construction of Interstate 270, for those of us old enough to remember that, the location of Ashland Chemical, and the development of Muirfield Village. You may recognize his name from the Sherm Sheldon Fishing Derby, which is held every Independence Day in his honor. Sherm served the city of Dublin for 25 years in key roles during a time of significant historical changes to our community, and played an integral role in the development of Dublin through times of explosive growth, helping to create our world-class city as we know it today. We extend our heartfelt condolences to his wife Clara, his sons Rodney and David, his daughter Susan, and their families. And now I'd ask to have a moment of silence in his honor and in recognition to his great contributions to our city. Okay, that will bring us to the portion of the agenda with respect to citizen comments. See, we have a Steve Palmhauser, is that right? Is there a Steve Palmhauser? Would like to come forward?
Hi, my name is Steve Palmhauser. I'm a resident of Columbus.
If you could give us your address, please, as well, for the record?
Yes, it's 230 East Pacemont Road in Columbus. I'm also, I'm also a member of Unitarian Universalist Justice Ohio, and I'm here with my friend Bill Folletton, who is a resident of Columbus. I'm going to be speaking before someone else here, but I wanted to give you some information about the Castor Corporation and some of the low-wage jobs that Castor supports. One of the contractors hired by Castor is C&amp;T Office Maintenance. This contractor pays janitors as little as $9,000 a year. Can any of us here survive on that? These kinds of jobs add to the rising poverty rate in central Ohio, which has nearly doubled over the past decade, and now the Castor Corporation is pursuing a large residential development in Dublin's Bridge Street District. As members of the Dublin City Council, you can take the lead in making sure that corporations benefiting from public tax dollars act responsibly and give back to our community. We know that you share our commitment to economic development in our region and to communities like Dublin where many of our members and their families live and work. Let's make sure that development is done responsibly. We urge you to require as a condition of any project approved that Castor be committed to hiring responsible companies that provide quality jobs to all of their employees. We welcome any questions you may have and look forward to discussing this matter with you further.
Thank you. We have also signed up Janelle Reinhardt. If you could state your name and address for the record, please?
Hi, my name is Janelle Reinhardt. My address is 86 North Hampton, Apartment A, Columbus, Ohio, 43213. Good evening, my name is Janelle, and I'm a member of SEIU Local 1, the Janitors and Security Operator Union in Columbus, Ohio. I'm a taxpayer, and I do live in central Ohio. I make a simple request that corporations who benefit from tax dollars give, give back to us, the taxpayers. Right now, big corporations are keeping wages down for their own gain, and it's hurting all of us. It weakens our economy and makes it harder for families to put food on their tables. The Castro Real Estate Company is a prime example of this. Castro is one of the largest property owners in the country, and also, and owns more than 41 million commercial real estate in our area. This company was made possible in part by taxpayers like me. Castro's projects have received millions in subsidiary, but instead of making our economy stronger by supporting good jobs, Castro is driving down good standards by doing business with irresponsible contractors that pay power level wages. It's unacceptable. Thank you.
Thank you. That will bring us to the portion of the agenda, the consent agenda. Are there any items council would like to remove from the consent agenda? Hearing none. Need a motion to approve the actions for the five items. Thank you. Is there a second? Ann?
Mr. Lecliter?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mayor Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Genizy Zerker?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber?
Yes.
Very good, thank you. Ordinance 13-15.
Res zoning 3.3 plus or minus acres located in northeast corner of the intersection of Emerald Parkway and Bright Road from R1, restricted suburban residential district to SO Suburban Office and Institutional District.
Thank you, Ms. Raoul.
Good evening, members of council. This is, as you said, the second reading for this ordinance. No changes have been made from the previous information when it was introduced, rezoning from R1 to SO. Planning Commission made a recommendation at their meeting.
Very good. Council, questions? We have a staff presentation. Let's see. I'm sorry, we have public testimony. Scott Herring, would you like to come forward? You'll have to excuse me, I'm pretty jet-lagged here today. Traveled 30-some hours yesterday.
Yes, welcome back, Mayor. My name's Scott Herring, I live at 3280 Lilly Mar Court. I just wanted to ask, I think at one point there, this ordinance was actually two parts, one regarding the land and its rezoning, but also a portion regarding land swap and interaction with Cota, and I just wanted to ask if the Cota land swap, if that would be reintroduced later as a different ordinance, or if, if this is just what's presented in the agenda tonight, these few sentences about the rezoning?
The particular legislation that's before you tonight is just the rezoning, and there's a separate ordinance with the development agreement, which will be considered on the March 23rd meeting.
Fantastic, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Herring. So, any further council discussion? Anybody?
I just wanted to clarify that this is a rezoning, and so it's, it's a rezoning for the stated purposes. It's not related to any specific company or retail establishment or anything by specific. So, if you would state for the record what is permissible under the rezoning if we, when we would be voting on this?
Absolutely. So, the zoning designation that we are, and Planning Commission is recommending approval of, is SO, which is Suburban Office Institutional. So, in terms of permitted uses, that would be different administrative, business office, professional office, institutional organizations, child and adult daycare as permitted uses, and then conditional uses would be any auto-oriented uses, research development, restaurant, fitness uses, and park and ride facility. So, there's a variety of uses.
And we're not voting on the conditional uses to this evening.
No.
If I recall correctly, and please correct me if I'm not, my memory is faded on this, but it seems like in the community plan that the original condition, not conditional uses, but the original uses, is consistent with what the community plan stated. Is that not correct?
That is true.
Okay. So, the conditional uses would, at some other time, if they came forward, would be an amendment, so to speak, to that?
Would be a separate approval.
Right.
Yes.
Anybody else? Tim?
There's obviously been a lot of discussion regarding this particular matter, and, and in particular from some of the residents in the Bright Road area, suggesting that this was an inappropriate location for what's intended to be its ultimate use, you know, which is, I think, as we all know, a Cota park and ride. And while certainly respecting Cota's analysis and their business decision, you know, speaking just for myself, you know, there are some real concerns that I have with respect to locating a park and ride at this particular location. There have been some that have suggested, and I should say that it's generally speaking, been a philosophy of council, if you will, you know, to maximize the value of property. And in this particular instance, there's some suggestion that the property would be more valuable developed as something other than a Cota park and ride. So, I'm hopeful that with further discussion, that, you know, Cota might be encouraged to give thoughtful consideration to other options which may exist. I know a lot of study has gone into this, but I think that we also need to be mindful of our interest.
I would agree with you, Tim, and I don't, after really studying this more, it doesn't seem to be the best location for a Cota park and ride. And to me, that's a separate issue, as I understood it, from what's on our agenda for this evening. But I, I think it's fair to put that out on the table right now, because we did have citizens come and speak to us about that they, they did not support the park and ride being in that location at this time, or at any time, really, but I think there are other opportunities within Dublin that I believe the staff have even reviewed with Cota, and they could go back and review them again, indicating that those were better options for them to select from.
Anybody else?
Well, excuse me, I'm sorry. If I could follow up, there's obviously a financial component to this, and, you know, certainly we need to be good caretakers of the taxpayers' money. That goes without saying, but I'll say it anyway. But I'm also hopeful that, given this community's support otherwise for Cota, in terms of supporting its levies over the years and so forth, that Cota would be cooperative and collaborative with respect to what we're trying to achieve overall here, you know, which is obviously moving the Bridge Street District projects forward, and, you know, I, I would really look forward and be appreciative of Cota's cooperation in that effort. That's all, thank you.
Thank you. I too have concerns with, with respect to this, this use, and I think it's been well-articulated by Tim and Merrill Lee, and I think it'd be appropriate to have staff go back, maybe have some other discussions with Cota. So, to that end, I would make a motion that we table the vote on this particular ordinance.
We'd actually be postponing the vote.
Excuse me. Postpone the vote?
Procedurally postpone.
I'm sorry, postpone? Okay.
I'll second that motion.
Very good. Ann?
Ms. Genizy Zerker?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Lecliter?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mayor Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Salee?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber?
Yes.
Okay. Ordinance 15-15, if I can keep things moving forward and stay awake.
Authorizing the city manager to execute necessary conveyance documents to acquire a 0.013 acre more or less permanent easement and a 0.007 acre more or less temporary easement from Laney and Barbara Strobel for the property located at 8622 Highland Crowe Road for construction of a shared-use path connection.
Mr. Hammersmith?
Members of council, quite simply before you this evening, is an acquisition necessary from the Strobbles for a shared-use path connection north of Bran Road along the east side of the roadway leading to Tartan West. We came to agreement at the appraised value of $1,225. Staff does recommend your approval this evening on this second reading.
Very good, thank you. Paul, any other questions? If not, we'll have a vote?
Vice Mayor Gerber?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Salee?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mayor Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Lecliter?
Yes.
Ms. Genizy Zerker?
Yes.
22-15?
Authorizing provision of certain incentives to HealthSpot, Inc., to induce it to retain an office and associated operations and workforce within the city, authorizing execution of an economic development agreement.
I'll introduce it. Thank you, Mr. Garcia.
Good evening, members of council. Economic Development staff has been in discussions with HealthSpot about their retention and expansion of their Crepper headquarters in Dublin. As you may know, they've made a lot of headlines the last 12 months, and as a result of that have required that they were going to expand their total employees in Dublin. So, the agreement before you for first reading tonight is a four-year 10%, performance incentive on withholdings, which is capped at $75,000 for the term of the agreement. In consideration, the company will retain 50 existing employees and add 40 new employees by the end of 2018.
Very good. Any council questions?
I don't have any questions, but I can remember when you first came in with this, and it seemed like sort of really out there, you know, and it's really wonderful to see sort of a startup almost. I don't know if they called themselves that at the time, but they probably didn't, but, and really take off and develop something that is so essential to the healthcare community, and I'm certainly pleased to have them located in Dublin.
Yes. We appreciate all your hard work out there.
Yes, and they actually launched their first prototype, actually, at the rec center.
Yeah, I remember that, yeah.
Yeah. Anybody else? If not, there'll be a second reading, public hearing, March 23rd. Thank you. Ordinance 23-15?
Authorizing additional police officer positions for a temporary period of time and declaring an emergency.
I'll introduce it. Dana?
Yes, this ordinance addresses the need to, to hire police officer staff in anticipation of certain vacancies that will occur due to retirement, and we're asking for a modification to the, to the staffing level authorized in the operating budget, and we will come back and make adjustments to the budget later in the year relative to appropriations. And I see the chief is at the mic, is there anything you want to add to that, chief?
No, this is just for some retirements that were not anticipated at the beginning of the year.
We've had a lot of retirements we weren't anticipating all year, so.
The key to this is it gives us the ability to get police officers trained through a pretty lengthy pipeline, as you know. It takes a lot to get an officer trained and ready for the street, and they also have to get through our internal training process before they're actually on the street, and so this anticipates that length of time that it will take in order to fill that vacancy at the time it occurs.
Very good. Mr. Mayor, I'll move to dispense with public hearing and treat it as an emergency. Okay, is there a second? Second. Thank you, on the motion?
Ms. Genizy Zerker?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mayor Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Salee?
Yes.
Mr. Lecliter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber?
Yes.
And on the ordinance?
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Genizy Zerker?
Yes.
Mr. Lecliter?
Yes.
Ms. Salee?
Yes.
Mayor Keenan?
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Gerber?
Yes.
And I was just going to ask that, we have a finance committee meeting in April, if you could have a memo in our materials about what the difference in the overall salary schedule would be then as a result of this action. Thank you.
I saw, I think it was an article in the paper that noted that there were a couple Dublin police recruits in the training class at, at the academy, is that right? Five of them, okay, among other suburbs and Columbus as well, so you're, you're on it, thank you. Ordinance 24-15?
Amending Section 2 Wage and Salary Structure Administration of Ordinance 7306, which is a compensation plan for non-union personnel and declaring an emergency.
I'll introduce it. Dana?
Thank you. This ordinance has to do with the reclassification of our current IT director position. As you may recall, our previous IT director retired at the beginning of the year, and that position is currently vacant. While it's in a vacant state, I'm asking that the position be reclassified, both in pay and in terms of its stature within the organization, that it serve as a department head-level position as opposed to a division head-level position. This is reflective of a couple things. One, the ongoing need to make sure that we're incorporating our technology within all departments, divisions, and operations, which we've always done, but in anticipation of ever-increasing information technology demands, the use of technology, leveraging technology in business practices as well as just IT operations, wanted to increase the level of this position. I would also anticipate that this individual, whoever is, is successful in being hired by the city in this role, would also take on responsibilities relative to Dublink, our broadband initiative, which has a lot of requirements with it, both in terms of capital development, programmatic development, and leveraging with economic development. So, looking for a pretty unique position there with a lot of experience, and I think it's appropriate to recommend that this be reclassified.
Very good. Any discussion?
The only, it's not really a discussion, but I wanted to make sure there was a statement that you would probably re-advertise it, and I wanted to confirm that you were going to be re-advertising it.
Actually, I had a conference call about that today with the search firm, and we are going to re-advertise.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move to dispense with public hearing and treat it as an emergency. Thank you, is there a second? Second. On the motion?
Ms. Salee?
Yes.
Mayor Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Lecliter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber?
Yes.
And on the ordinance?
Mr. Lecliter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber?
Yes.
Ms. Salee?
Yes.
Mayor Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Lecliter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber?
Yes.
And on the ordinance?
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Genizy Zerker?
Yes.
Mr. Lecliter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber?
Yes.
And on the ordinance?
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Genizy Zerker?
Yes.
Mr. Lecliter?
Yes.
Ms. Salee?
Yes.
Mayor Keenan?
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Gerber?
Yes.
And I was just going to ask that, we have a finance committee meeting in April, if you could have a memo in our materials about what the difference in the overall salary schedule would be then as a result of this action. Thank you.
I saw, I think it was an article in the paper that noted that there were a couple Dublin police recruits in the training class at, at the academy, is that right? Five of them, okay, among other suburbs and Columbus as well, so you're, you're on it, thank you. Ordinance 24-15?
Amending Section 2 Wage and Salary Structure Administration of Ordinance 7306, which is a compensation plan for non-union personnel and declaring an emergency.
I'll introduce it. Dana?
Thank you. This ordinance has to do with the reclassification of our current IT director position. As you may recall, our previous IT director retired at the beginning of the year, and that position is currently vacant. While it's in a vacant state, I'm asking that the position be reclassified, both in pay and in terms of its stature within the organization, that it serve as a department head-level position as opposed to a division head-level position. This is reflective of a couple things. One, the ongoing need to make sure that we're incorporating our technology within all departments, divisions, and operations, which we've always done, but in anticipation of ever-increasing information technology demands, the use of technology, leveraging technology in business practices as well as just IT operations, wanted to increase the level of this position. I would also anticipate that this individual, whoever is, is successful in being hired by the city in this role, would also take on responsibilities relative to Dublink, our broadband initiative, which has a lot of requirements with it, both in terms of capital development, programmatic development, and leveraging with economic development. So, looking for a pretty unique position there with a lot of experience, and I think it's appropriate to recommend that this be reclassified.
Very good. Any discussion?
The only, it's not really a discussion, but I wanted to make sure that there was a statement that you would probably re-advertise it, and I wanted to confirm that you were
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
On the motion?
Ms. Saleh.
Yes.
Mayor Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Lecliter.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
Ms. Genizy Zerker.
Yes.
And on the ordinance.
Mr. Lecliter.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
Ms. Saleh.
Yes.
Mayor Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Ms. Genizy Zerker.
Yes.
And Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
And on the ordinance. Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Ms. Genizy Zerker.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Ms. Genizy Zerker.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
And on the ordinance.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Ms. Genizy Zerker.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mr. Lecliter.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
Mayor Keenan.
Yes.
Ms. Saleh.
Yes.
And on the ordinance. Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Ms. Peterson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
Ms. Saleh.
Yes.
Mayor Keenan.
Yes.
Anybody else, Tim?
Was the applicant not going to speak this evening? I don't want to interrupt if the applicant was.
They are here if there are any questions.
Okay. Well, this probably seems the appropriate time for me to make a statement. Last week, a glossy piece of junk mail arrived in Dublin mailboxes suggesting your Dublin city council was being reckless with respect to its Bridge Street District plan. The very plan, by the way, which has undergone five years of study, debate, and public participation. What distresses me and should distress you is that certain local critics of the Bridge Street District plan, who have professed their love of our community, have invited the interest of billionaires from hundreds of miles away outside of Ohio who never even have set foot in Dublin. These critics and outside interests would have you believe that the same city council, this city council, responsible for accumulating record cash reserves in excess of $55 million through a recession, and the same city council whose wise financial decisions over the last decade have resulted in the award of the highest possible ratings from Moody's and Fitch, has suddenly lost its mind. I certainly welcome the difference of opinion and a healthy debate concerning the facts as opposed to the distortions favored by the critics. Dublin has enjoyed the success over the years in large part because its leaders have made wise decisions independent of the influence of outside interests. Ladies and gentlemen, the concern is not the Bridge Street District. The real concern here is the danger posed by these outsiders and those that have invited them to meddle in Dublin's affairs. Thank you.
Thank you. Well-stated, I think that was very well articulated, Tim. Anybody else?
Yep.
All right then, we have a motion to approve the preliminary plat, then?
So moved.
Thank you, second.
Second.
Very good, Anne?
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Ms. Genizy Zerker.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Ms. Saleh.
Yes.
Mayor Keenan.
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
And on the ordinance. Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Ms. Genizy Zerker.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Ms. Genizy Zerker.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Ms. Saleh.
Yes.
Mayor Keenan.
Yes, thank you. And that would bring us to staff comments, council committee reports, the staff comments. Dana?
Yes, just one item that I had put information on at your place about has to do with the senior project manager position in the planning division. You may recall that back during the budget process this last year, I requested a senior project manager position be placed within the division of planning. The focus of that and purpose of that was to really, while planning is obviously forward-looking, and we wake up every day doing that, I really wanted someone on that staff dedicated to strategic planning, really looking over the horizon and helping us with that, in addition to monitoring, advising on current and future trends, community plan updates, ongoing assessment and updating the city's form-based code in support of the Bridge Street District, ongoing assessment and updating the city's zoning code, and management and execution of various special projects related to strategic forward-thinking planning. And again, I want to emphasize, not that we haven't done that, we've done that very well, but I need more capacity to do that, so we were kind enough to put that in the operating budget, and I'm pleased to let you know that Steve Langworthy has agreed our director of planning to move over into that position. And I think with his extensive consulting background, his extensive institutional knowledge of our codes, he was here and was one of the primary authors of our form-based code, our West Innovation District Code, a lot of areas that we have a lot of emphasis on and activity going on in, I think it's imperative that we have Steve take up that role. That means we would be looking for, that means we would be looking for a new director of planning, but I'm very appreciative of Steve's willingness to do this. I think it's going to pay great dividends to the city down the road to have him do that, and I want to publicly thank him for that, but of course, before I do that, I need to ask that you waive the competitive selection process in order that we can make that move happen.
So moved.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor of Steve?
Ms. Genizy Zerker.
Yes.
Mr. Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mr. Lecliter.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber.
Yes.
Mayor Keenan.
Yes.
Ms. Saleh.
Yes.
Went back in time there, Amy. Okay.
Just a couple more items, if I could, Mayor?
Yes, please.
Yes. I want to thank staff for the state of the city last week. I want to publicly thank Sandra and her staff, and Joe and John and the team here that puts our videos together, all the support in putting that together. I thought we had a great turnout. I publicly want to thank Wendy's for allowing us to use their great facility. It's a beautiful facility. I think the public really enjoys it. Certainly, we enjoy using it. It makes it so much easier when we're doing presentations like that. And then the last item, or another item, is I would like to recommend to council that you place on your calendars in the coming months some work session dates, and I'm recommending April 6th, May 11th, and June 15th. We will get to you the proposed topics of discussion for those or suggested topics. Certainly, if you have some that you would like to discuss, we could put those on that agenda for those meetings as well. And then the last item is just, again, the mayor mentioned it earlier, reminder about the St. Patrick's Day parade this weekend, starting at 11 o'clock, and of course, there's all the other great events going on with St. Patrick's Day throughout the week and this weekend. So I wish everyone a safe St. Patrick's Day experience, but go out and celebrate St. Patrick's Day. That's all I have.
Very good. We'll look forward to seeing everybody there. Okay, we have a report on Independence Day events, and I think, Amy, do you have some comments you want to make as chair of public services?
Yes, I do. If you can bear with me while I readjust my iPad. Okay. If you guys will remember, back in January, staff provided us with a memo of suggestions for changes and improvements for our Fourth of July Independence Day celebration, a couple tweaks basically to hopefully make the table sales smoother and better and allow more people to be involved. And then also, we have had record crowds at the stadium, and we've wrestled and talked a lot about at the committee meeting with ways that we could make sure that this is a Dublin event and not so much a regional event, and to that end, suggested selling for a nominal fee, general admission wristbands that would guarantee Dublin residents entry into the stadium, because some people were closed out last year because of the record crowds, and we know that this has become a very, very popular event in the region. Also talked about not necessarily promoting it on the radio through the local radio station. I think we're working on that so that, again, you know, we aren't promoting to a 12-county area, wherever that radio reaches, but rather make it more of a Dublin-centric event. So to that end, there was a change that staff suggested of limiting the table sales to one per resident, and also the general admission wristbands. Also, a suggestion of a committee member moving the table sales rather than a weekday, try selling the tables on a Saturday morning in May. Perhaps other people who couldn't necessarily take time away from work to buy a table would be able to come on that Saturday morning. So I think, and then again, offering the wristbands to residents only prior to the event, and then non-residents able to buy wristbands the day of the event if the tickets haven't sold out. I think we provide a total of 10,000 wristbands.
The fire department's looking over, we gave them a GIS map that had all the exact measurements, so they'll come back to us with an exact number. Probably within the week, we'll know. Around 10,000.
We'll come back to that. I took the prerogative of the chair to reverse the order there, because I kind of wanted to hear what your thoughts were, and I know you have a presentation.
Really, Amy really talked about it. I think the things that we learned last year, that because of our popularity of the event, it's just gotten such a great reputation, that there is something we need to do. Last year, when we had to close the gates at 9:00 PM, a lot of our residents were left outside the gates, and I heard many comments from some that have been saying they've been coming for 15 years, never had this problem. So we really did feel like we needed to make a change. I was kind of saying, this will be my 18th Fourth of July, and I feel like we've pretty much done some of the same things, so it's time to make that change. And so really, I think our two main goals are keeping the safety of our guests in the stadium and also making it so more Dublin residents can attend the event. And really, when we think about those two things, I think by limiting the tables and having the wristbands, we're really going to be able to take care of those two things.
I had a question after reading the minutes and all, which I appreciated. Was there a discussion, I didn't notice a discussion, about setting the table cost for non-resident to like $200, so that you're discouraging also that number perhaps, you know, becoming smaller? It's still at 10 people a table, you're still only paying $20 for a concert and, you know, everything. So I mean, it's not like it's overly expensive, but it would differentiate what we're giving to our residents versus non-residents.
We actually have it in the last, I think it's been five years ago was the last time we had any tables left over for non-residents to buy. Because we sell the tables first to residents, we always said that table sales to non-residents would go on sale June 1st, and then the last five years, we haven't had any available. So even if we had that tier.
It said in your minutes, though, that there was a concern that the second table was being given or sold by the Dublin residents.
Right, and I think because the whole point was, is you could, as a resident, come in and buy two tables, which is essentially 20 seats. We really have no way of knowing who are in those other 19 seats. They could be Dublin residents, we just don't really have a way of knowing, and that was kind of the idea of doing it with one. We know that it's limited.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
You know, and the discussion also centered around the fact that so many people, they get up at four or five o'clock in the morning, try to get one of these tables, they get in line, and they're cut off because people have bought two tables, so this opens it up for more residents to have a chance to finally get a table, which is really important. And then, you know, the regional draw of these really great bands we have is getting people that may be fans of these people who follow their website, and they might be in Cincinnati or someplace and say, hey, this is just a fantastic band, I'm coming up to see them. So those people are forcing our people literally out of the opportunity to experience this, and our taxpayers are funding this, so really, there's a lot of good reasons to do this.
You know, John, I don't disagree with that. Amy, could you explain to me again the wristband proposal? This is for, I don't totally understand what that is.
Allison, correct me if I'm wrong. The wristband sales would be for admittance to the stadium grounds, so you would have a seat in the stadium, or you'd be able to be within, on the stadium grounds versus inside the fence. You would have guaranteed admittance to that, and as a Dublin resident, we didn't want people to be closed out of that, as happened last year. And we talked about giving wristbands free to Dublin residents, but then people don't use them. If something's free, they might not value it, and they might not use it, and then you have people who bought a wristband, or I'm sorry, who didn't buy a wristband, or I'm sorry, people who weren't able to buy wristbands who aren't able to attend because you've already sold out.
And you would open up sales for these wristbands at the same time that you opened sales up for the tables?
We actually were considering, just so it wouldn't be confusing, June 1, so that we know there's probably going to be a big push right at the beginning, the first three days, and then there's going to be a big push the last three days.
Yeah, because when I read the report, it looked like, well, we'll sell them the day or two before, and I apologize, I read through this kind of quickly, and, well, people would probably want a little more time than that to make those arrangements.
Yeah, I think we've been talking about June 1, it is a Monday, and so it's an easy thing to remember.
Remind me what the charge was and where you get these?
$5 at the rec center.
At the rec center.
At the rec center, so that we can text residency as well, so you can't buy them online or anything.
Any limitations?
first three days, and then there's going to be a big push the last three days.
Yeah, because when I read the report, it looked like, well, we'll sell them the day or two before, and I've written, and I apologize, I read through this kind of quickly, and, well, people would probably want a little more time than that to make those arrangements.
Yeah, I think we've, we've been talking about June 1, it is a Monday, and so it's an easy thing to remember.
Remind me what the charge was and where you get these?
$5 at the rec center.
Yeah, at the rec center.
At the rec center, so that we can text residency as well, so you can't buy them online or anything.
Any limitations? So, if I have a family of six, can I buy six, or do I?
We are limiting it to five, just so, we had, we picked a random number, but we aren't going to, if somebody really wanted to, they could come back the next day, so we're not marking off a list of this house came in on Tuesday, you know, so we do know that. We wanted to put a number on it.
Okay. You know, that's, that's an interesting comment, but, you know, I think that if it's a family of seven, we might have to make an exception, you know.
And I do trust the rec center staff, and we can give them that direction if somebody says they have seven people in the family, you know, to kind of make that accommodations.
Yeah, I think we're going to have to be prepared to do that.
Yeah, I think we want to have citizens to have to come back a second day for two more.
Right.
Wristbands.
Exactly.
Yeah, we'll, we'll be the ones that hear about that.
We'll be the ones that'll hear about all of this, as we should be.
Yes.
I, if I may, I just wanted to say, if you read the minutes, I probably sounded like a wet blanket. If you were at the, our meeting, I probably sounded like a wet blanket, and, and I probably was a bit of a wet blanket, but I, I wanted to challenge us, and I wanted to challenge myself, with respect to what this event has grown into, and, and just reflect if, you know, we're satisfied with where it is, and its potential inevitable growth, I guess. So, that's all.
Very good.
When will we be given the special information about?
We are still in contract negotiations, but our goal right now, and we've told the agents as well, is the next council meeting.
Okay.
Great.
So, I have one item, and that, we've all heard about the traffic issue. We had any discussion?
We, we did have a.
Oh, there it is. I'll, I'll let Heinz talk about the traffic specifically.
Yeah, we, we did have a discussion about traffic, and mind if you could share your thoughts.
Yeah, I think we've got a good traffic plan, and I think, as we discussed in the meeting, the addition of the roundabout at Brandon Kaufman has helped immensely. I think we should have some good parking over at the old Verizon buildings. We're keeping our fingers crossed. So, I think, I think it'll work out.
All right.
I mean, last year, the roundabout was open too, and it didn't work out, so I'm hoping that somehow the, the management out of the parking lot is what's part of the problem is.
Well, the, a, as we discussed again, the north of the high school is still a little bit of a problem, less of a problem, since we've had the one big parking, private parking lot that's now gone. But it is a little bit of a problem, because we have a lot of private parking up there that all exit at the same time, and it's difficult for our traffic to flow unimpeded northbound. So, we will try and run our one-way southbound and get the majority of the traffic out that way.
You know, Chief, I saw, I mean, last year, I mean, it was obvious that our police department was communicating with one another out there, but toward the end of, toward the roundabout, I noticed Franklin County sheriffs, and it didn't seem to be quite the same coordination. So, in other words, when, when our police were allowing traffic to proceed along the road, then, then the sheriffs were stopping and diverting it around.
That's a sheriff that works a special duty job there at Forest Run and Kaufman. So, yeah, you're right, it is difficult. We do have communication with him, but his job is to let people out of that neighborhood as well, so.
Well, we know it's a tough job, I mean, but we do hear about it. I know you do too, so.
As do we.
We, we, we talked about it at length, and I guess I came away from the discussion appreciating that we do have a plan. It's just a very difficult situation, because you have thousands and thousands of vehicles.
All at the same time.
And everybody's leaving at the exact same time. The fireworks are over, it's time to go. And so.
Yeah, sure.
We, we talked extensively about the fact that there is a plan to have traffic flowing one way, in one direction, and one way in the other direction, so you have, you know, four or five lanes open and flowing, but that only works, you know, so far, and then there's things that, that are out of our control.
And we will publicize the traffic plan and, and make sure that we have some suggestions on where to park and how to get in and out.
All right. You know, I got to say, Chief, that, you know, I parked over by the high school, and for as many cars as there was, leaving at the same time, a 15-minute wait really wasn't that bad. So, I thought you guys were doing a pretty good job.
Thank you.
Chief, I, I have a question. These private parking lots, north of the high school there, are, are they required to have, you know, the special duty law enforcement, or no? Right? They're not required to, right?
No.
And, and not at the high school administration exit either, right?
There's, well, we provide it to try to get everybody out, but that, it's not required, no. We do provide it at the exit for the central office building, is that what you're talking about, for the schools?
Well, any that, that line that, the, the street there to the north, okay, so.
Yeah, for north of that is where we don't have much control, and I'm talking about the church lots.
Okay.
We had, in the past, the Eggspula property had a lot of cars parked there, but we don't have to contend with that anymore.
Yeah, and, and, and what I experienced in the past, heading north, was that the folks that are, that are manning these, the non-law enforcement folks manning these private lots, are coming out and directing traffic, and, you know, stopping traffic, and, and that seems, that, that's a problem, to say the least. And how is that, how is that even authorized?
Well, it's not. And, I mean, when we've seen it, we've prohibited it, but, as I said, most of us are tied up, so it's, it's a little difficult to police it sometimes. But, we did see that more when we had the big lot that was open north of the high school. We haven't seen it nearly as much since that closed.
Well, if, if we know who is allowing private paid parking on these lots, maybe we approach them ahead of time and remind them, you know, that none of their personnel, none of their staff are authorized to direct traffic. Is that, is that, you're the expert, but.
No, that's true. That's, that's a fair assessment, and we, we can do that.
Just a thought.
Okay. Once again, we appreciate that. Thank you. So, if there's no, no further discussion, then we'll need a motion to approve the recommendations. And Amy, if you want to make that motion and outline those for us?
Yeah, I would make a motion that we approve the recommendations by the Public Service Committee with the assistance of our staff. Want to change the table sales to limit it to one per Dublin resident, rather than the two in the past. We want to charge $5 for general admission wristbands, again, for Dublin residents aged four years and older. We want to move the table sales to a Saturday in May, rather than a weekday, and then offer the wristbands to Dublin residents only prior to the event, and then offer them for free the day of the event. Is there anything else? Okay?
Got it, very good. Look for a second.
Second.
Thank you, Anne.
Mr. Leckleiter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gerber?
Oh, yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mayor Keenan?
Yes.
Ms. Janice Zerker?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Kimma Saleh?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
I know it's been, been a labor of love.
Thank you.
So, Amy, you've got your P and Z hat on now.
I do.
Yes.
I do. We, I don't believe have had anything earthshaking since our last meeting, so we've got a meeting this Thursday, you're all invited.
Very good. Rick, admin chair?
Yeah, as everyone knows, we have some interviews tomorrow night and Wednesday, starting at 6:00 here. So, as I promised, I'll try to get everybody out of here by, with the time change sunset, so.
There you go. Perfect. Thank you. John, community development?
We're going to give you a report here at the next meeting on the, we had three applicants, and I think we saw the benefit of all their efforts, so we'll give you that report the next city council meeting.
Terrific. Mary Lee, finance?
No, no report, thank you.
And Amy, we've already covered public services. Very good. John, DAC, Dublin Arts Council, anything there?
Uh, no, nothing more than we should be thinking about supporting the Garden Party, which is coming up.
Coming up very quickly, thank you.
Yep.
Greg, Board of Education?
Yeah, Dana and Angel and I met with the Board, Dr. Hoadley and Board of Education members, Lynn May and some others. They, our staff, once again, did an excellent job of explaining a very complicated, the new community authority, explaining the, the whole process, and I guess that dialogue will remain open.
Very good. Mary Lee, Morpsy?
We have a meeting this week, so I have nothing to report at this time, thank you.
Next meeting you will.
I will.
All right. US 33, Tim? Anything?
We only meet once a month.
Very good. Wanted to give you the opportunity.
I already gave you the report, but thank you.
Okay. Very good. Roundtable, Greg?
I just want to thank Dana and the staff for the state of the city. Anybody that attended that and walked out not feeling very positive and encouraged about the state of our city really missed the point, so thank you for all your efforts.
Thank you, Greg. Amy?
I also wanted to reiterate Greg's point about the state of the city. It was really, really well-attended, everybody really enjoyed it, and I always leave that event just absolutely so proud to be a resident of Dublin, and to sit up here with my colleagues. We've got a good thing going.
Very good. Mary Lee?
Ditto to the state of the city, and I, I think I saw a lot of new faces there this year, which I think is always a good thing. And I'm glad to hear, Greg, that you and Dana and others are meeting with the Board of Education, as that is also part of the rumors that are going around, and being passed on Facebook, and emails, and postcards, and all, that the, the school district is losing money over the decisions that we are making. So, it's, would be good for the Board of Education, I think, to also clarify to their public what the arrangements and the relationship is with the city, and the agreement with the birch dyed quarter in the city. Thank you.
Very good. Tim?
Thank you. I had a couple of questions, Dana, with respect to your Items of Interest memo, the first one being the Dublin Road South Shared Youth Use Path Project. And I just want to, I want to clarify my understanding, is, is this to say it's not going to happen this year?
The answer to that is, it is not going to happen this year, as it stands right now. We, if you really look at all that's going on with the Riverside Drive, State Route 161 project, and as we've looked at maintenance of traffic, although we'll be able to maintain traffic in all directions with that project, and with what's going on at 33270, it's just going to be too hard to close that down. We may, because, because that construction would require some close down of Dublin Road if we were to do that, and we just feel that it's not, you know, it's, it's like adding insult to injury, I hate to put it that way, but it could really, you know, reduce our, our detouring and so forth. Now, it's not to say we won't continue to do preparation for that project, so there is some utility work going on, other preparations, so that when we do get to the point where we can get that going, it'll, it'll happen pretty quickly. There, we will do some temporary restoration only, just, you know, for erosion control and things like that, until we can get back in there and do the work. So, I think it's best that we hold off on that, given all the traffic of maintenance of traffic issues.
Okay. I, I know it's a tough decision to make.
We really didn't want to do it, but that's kind of where we were left.
So, are we committing to construction in 2016?
That one I'm going to let Megan speak to.
Because the residents are going to be interested.
Yeah, I think what we'll do is, we'll monitor the traffic impacts arising from the other projects as the year progresses. If any of those end up ending earlier, then we can go ahead and look at bidding it yet this year even, but it's unlikely that we would get much of it built, if any of it built this year. But, the goal will be to bid it, and I don't see why we wouldn't be able to get it built next year. The project's at a point where we could proceed with building, it's just, there's so many larger improvements that'll be occurring this year that.
Assuming typical weather, about how long of a construction period are we looking at?
I believe we've been planning on five months.
Five months?
For the construction, for the entire construction. There's all those walls that need to come down, there's, it's a long path going through a lot of properties, but a lot of impactors.
It's actually a pretty complicated process when.
Yeah, it really is.
Because I live around there, and you can look at all those walls.
Yeah, the topography's very challenging.
So, we'll, we'll keep tabs on how all the other construction's going on, and see when we can fit it in.
I'm wondering about, like, the walls, if we've looked at, and I'm assuming that you have, but maybe we move the walls, because that wouldn't necessarily require closing down the roadway. You know, I, I don't know, anything that we could do for the, to move the project forward?
Yeah, we're going to look at ways that we can minimize the closure. It's not just the closure, though, it's just, there's going to be so much work going on around the city that, do we really need to impact Dublin Road also, which is going to be such an important alternate route for the other improvements?
Mm-hmm.
It's unfortunate, because we've come so far, and we're to that point, it's just the timing of everything.
Yeah, I mean, I appreciate that, and that makes sense, but there's residents there that have been looking for this connectivity for, and they've been promised for the last four years, so Amy and I are going to hear about this.
Yeah.
So, anything we can do to, do, that was, continue what we can do now, or if we can certainly promise to them that it's going to happen, you know, at some point, I think would be very helpful.
Spinning out a letter.
Yeah, I was just going to say, we.
Since we, they had anticipated this year.
Yeah, obviously, we wanted to tell you this first, and, but we, we will follow up in reaching out to them direct, and, and maybe there's an opportunity to engage HOAs and so forth, and, and make sure they understand the sequencing issues and everything.
The mid-century Dublin neighborhood, the Welland Farms are the two, and Waterford probably would be interested in hearing about that.
We'll definitely do that, and we'll make sure that we let them know that we're going to be looking out ahead, and we'll bid things well in advance, so that as soon as the window arises, we'll get to building the path.
And, and any work that could be done on the, the properties that didn't involve something in the roadway, and if we could just keep moving forward, that would.
Yeah, we looked at the opportunity to piecemeal it, and then you just get into multiple contracts, contract, or the, the costs escalate, and the utilities, we were looking at ways to work around the utilities, and they're just all over the place, so.
Okay.
Kind of things, timing wise, but.
All right.
We'll communicate, we just wanted to make sure you guys were aware first.
Very good.
Well, thank you, and one of the reasons I raised it is because I hear about it too.
Yeah.
Seriously, I mean, you know, some people that I know in the neighborhood. Thank you, Dana and Megan. Also, Dana, the Neighborhood Association meeting, which is scheduled for April 23rd, I believe, I noticed that it's scheduled not in a city facility, but at La Scala, and I just wanted to confirm that we don't pay for this space?
Oh, we had it at Heartland last year.
They donate it?
It was at Heartland last year.
I understand that.
Yeah.
Well, yeah.
I'll have to check and get back, I don't think we are, no, we're not paying for the space, Sandra said.
Great. Great, thank you. I attended the Economic Forecast Breakfast, the Chambers Annual Economic Forecast Breakfast on February 24th at Dublin Methodist Hospital, believe that was at least the fourth year that it's been held there. The speaker, maybe Dana will remember, he was from Kansas, or he was an economist, as you would imagine, but he had, it was kind of a, it was interesting to have somebody from out of state, but, but certainly somebody who had studied the statistics, and, and had a connection to Ohio, who had family in Ohio, and, and so forth. But anyway, it was, it was a good presentation, it was well-attended, not only by city staff, but by others as well, of course, and I suppose, not surprisingly, but, you know, a generally positive outlook regarding the central Ohio economy.
Yes, and I'm trying to remember the name of it, it's on the tip of my tongue, the, the bank that he represents, he's a nationally renowned economist.
Wells Fargo.
Wells Fargo, that's, I knew it was a W something.
We got that much. We got that much.
And, and at the, with the support of, who's IGS Energy that made that connection for the chamber, so, they, anyway. Yeah, it was a fascinating presentation, and outlook is pretty good, actually, all things considered.
I think so. I think so. Also, attended the visitation in Grove City for Sherman Sheldon on, this past Saturday, talked with his wife and his family, and they certainly had a lot of interesting stories to tell. In particular, his wife, I, I just had to laugh, you know, how she said that, of course, Mr. Sheldon had previously served on, served on city council, and was the city clerk treasurer, and, you know, she, she, she pulled me close, and she said, you know, you know, we had a discussion, Sherman and I did, it was a little bit of a risk, you know, him taking that first village administrator's position. And then he was village administrator for how long? I, you know, a good long time, obviously. And then, one of his sons was talking about riding dirt bikes, they would ride their dirt bike up Dublin Road to Forest Run, had some friends up in Forest Run, and he commented about the time that, you know, they would ride back behind the neighborhood, you know, where it was woods and so forth, and, you know, at one point in time, they noticed all the land being cleared, and had no clue, really, and didn't really care, other than the fact that it was, you know, kind of interrupting, you know, their, their extracurricular activities, and of course, that's what became Muirfield Village Golf Course. And I'm looking forward to participating in the Dublin Business Appreciation Day this Friday. If you ever get the opportunity to do it, it's really a lot of fun, really gets you in the spirit, and, anyway, looking forward to that.
Expanded that a little bit this year, we added two more bands to get out to more businesses, and it's just, businesses just love the experience, so.
I think you did it last year, didn't you, Ma?
You and I did it, yeah, it was, it was.
It was last year.
It was very interesting. It was a lot that people really enjoyed at the businesses. They, usually around lunchtime, and they break, and there's prizes and gifts and things given out, they were, they were all appreciative.
Yeah, some nice prizes from local merchants, I mean, really nice.
Many, many merchants contributed to that, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. John?
I just want to, again, want to say, I thought that Megan and Angel and the chief and Dana did a great job, and I'd encourage any of the citizens to take the opportunity, if they weren't there, to tune into that program on the Dublin Channel. I think they're going to learn a lot, see what we're really doing, and what we're up to, and it is a hugely complex undertaking, and a really wonderful thing for our city, so, good job, did a great job.
Thank you. Rick?
Yeah. Yeah, ditto on the state of the city, excellent job by, by all. I was talking to the chief, and I know, Mary, Mary, you and I have attended the Citizens' Police Academy, and I, I know you shared the same view that I have, that was very rewarding, and I'd encourage other members of council to consider doing the same thing. And Chief, I think the applications start May 1st, somewhere around there?
Probably, second day.
Yeah, so, it's, it's a little bit of time, but it's Thursday nights, except on Halloween nights, you don't have to go to that one, even though I, I did, so.
I'm just trying.
Well, I, I needed the extra credit, I think.
There you go.
Yeah. I guess, one more thing, you know, serving on city council's been rewarding, yet humbling
for me, and I think the hallmark of our city councils over the years has been that we, we may not always agree, but we have been constructive in our, in, in the way we've conducted our affairs, we certainly demonstrated leadership and experience, and I call that a core value, and I think that's something that the residents ought to be very appreciative of, and I know they are. And, and looking forward, I think it's very important that city councils continue to embrace that core value of constructive and what I call experienced leadership. This is an election year, and I've decided to run for reelection this fall, and I hope to advance that same core, core value, so that's all I have. Very good. Thank you. I have a few things here. As many of you know, I just returned from Japan after being there eight days. I was there at the invitation and expense of the Ministry of Foreign Affairs. It was, I believe, a very productive trip, the thrust being economic development, trying to encourage friendships, relationships. Columbus 2020 was actually there at the same time, and I think continue to be there for a few more days. And I know Colleen is, is there with them, Max and Deb, I think it's Schuler?
Deb Shear.
Shear, she is there. We, we crossed paths once at Hakaida, the, the facility there, and it was in, what's the time?
Saitama.
Saitama, she's my expert Japanese. Saitama, impressive facility, it's the parent of Hadaka USA, and actually, Mr. Hadaka's brother runs, runs that facility there. Everybody was, was extremely gracious. I did have an opportunity to also visit the US Embassy. That was quite an experience, I met with the Deputy Ambassador, we exchanged the protocol and the gifts and the cards and, and all of that. The security was incredibly tight, I mean, what they, what we went through to even get in there, through, through a check, and then through a barricade with another barricade, dogs, mirrors, the whole thing, opened the trunk and the, or the boot and the bonnet, or whatever they called them there, and finally, finally went in. Noteworthy, it was the next day when the South Korean ambassador was attacked, as you may recall, and that was met with a lot of, of, people were very concerned about that, obviously, and it kind of spoke to why all the security's necessary. Those diplomats really serve our country all around the world, and in that environment, you see where they're at, you, you know, they're on the front lines throughout the world, and it's, it's a tough, I think, a tough, tough job. We did go through the Honda plant, the new one in, I want to say Torrey. It was an incredible facility, brand new, only a year old, everything was robotics, I mean, right down to putting the hubcaps and the bolts on the wheels, I, it was fascinating. So what else did we do? We went to, went to a golf, the golf facility that is going to host the 2020 Olympics. They're very proud of the 2020 Olympic Games that will be in Tokyo, they're building the arenas even, even now, starting that planning project. I was there, and somebody came up, and a couple of the members were introduced to me, and one of the, one of the members came up and said, "OH." And I'm like, whoa. And it was a Japanese member there who had gone to Ohio State, he graduated in 1966, and he was a baseball player for Ohio State. So then there was another gal there that worked with, knew Dan Sullivan personally, and a number of the other, other people in Muirfield. So you can hardly go anywhere in the world without running into, into people who are aware of central Ohio and, and/or Dublin. Noteworthy, we went to a city called Mashiko, met the mayor, presented his key to the city, and I have sent some texts and emails, but I would propose that we at least consider or talk about considering a sister city relationship with them. A lot of culture, and you, I know Mary Lee knows about this, it's probably world-renowned for ceramics. They had a walkway in Dublin that was very similar to Dublin, historic district, right down to they buried their utilities, which is unusual there. They had the banners in the street, and there must have been hundreds of shops, a lot of ceramic and kilns and workers there. They couldn't have been more gracious. The mayor took me to the, the local school where they had a taiko drum demonstration. They were, they were really going to town, in fact, the mayor's there with me, suit and tie, they're all dressed very well. Next thing I know, he's taking his shoes and socks off, and he's up on the, up there, he happened to be one of the members of their group, and he's out there with a deal, and